This time, we're going to call it a word of the public hearing of Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, January the 4th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. We want to welcome everybody and thank you for coming. The purpose of this afternoon's public hearing is to receive public comments for or against proposed zoning applications that will be considered for action by the board at tonight's regular board meeting following this hearing. No action will be taken at this hearing. All the parties are welcome to remain after the public hearing for the regular meeting itself, and that will begin at 6:00 unless this hearing goes over. It could be a little bit later. We have five items on the agenda for this hearing. After introducing each item, we'll ask the applicant if they're present to come and speak on behalf of their request and talk about their application. After each applicant has spoken, anyone who wishes to speak either for or against the application can come forward. The first item on the agenda for the hearing is a request for a conditional use permit by Brian Devine of 235 Henry Park Drive, Roswell, Georgia, to build a 199-foot-tall wireless communications tower on a five-acre tract of land located at 50 Jim Grizzle Road, and that's tax parcel 040-068. So is Mr. Devine here? Mr. Devine, if you'll come up and just talk to us about your application.
Sure. My name is Brian Devine. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, and they're looking to place a new tower on a five-acre wooded lot along Jim Grizzle Road to improve wireless coverage and access to emergency services in the area. This is what Verizon would refer to as a coverage site, meaning that the existing coverage in the area is weak to nonexistent, and there's no guarantee that someone placing a wireless call to 911 in the area would even be able to get through. So that's part of the issues that Verizon is trying to solve with this new site. Now, in determining where to place the tower, we first looked to see whether there were any cold location opportunities, meaning existing buildings or towers in the area that Verizon could place their antennas on to meet the coverage objective. In this case, there were not. It's a very rural area. There are no buildings of any size, and the closest existing tower is a little over two and a half miles to the northwest and incapable of meeting the coverage objective. The towers in the other directions are even farther away, so that's why, in this case, we had to look at building a new tower and just meet the coverage objective.
Okay.
Now, the area itself, where the tower is going to be placed, is heavily wooded. If you look at the aerial photos in the drawings, you will see that there are trees in nearly every direction, which provides a natural visual buffer so that neighbors won't have to look at the base of the tower or the compound. The tower itself is a monopole in design. There won't be any guy wires, and the tower will not be lighted because it does not meet the threshold for notice to the FAA. That means that at night, there won't be any visual impacts to the surrounding residents. Now, the tower will be built to accommodate a minimum of three carriers, so in the future, if AT&amp;T or T-Mobile decide that they want additional coverage in the area, the tower will be available for them to place their antennas. The facility will be unmanned and will not increase traffic to the area. A technician will only need to visit the site an average of once a month for around a half an hour to an hour for routine maintenance and testing. There was a question at the planning commission hearing regarding whether the site would have fiber backhaul, and I did some research in the interim, and it turns out that there will not be fiber when the site is brought on air, and that's just because of general lack of fiber availability in the area. So most likely, when the site is brought on air, Verizon will be utilizing T1s or some other form of backhaul. It just won't be fiber in the beginning. Verizon does try to get fiber to a site as soon as possible, and hopefully, in the future, when there is fiber available in the area, they will utilize it. So that's all I have for now, unless you have any questions.
Okay. The commissioners, do you guys have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Devine. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to come up and speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wants to come up in favor, speak in favor? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak against the application? Anyone? Okay, here none. We'll move on to the next item. The second item on the agenda for the hearing is a conditional use permit by Aubrey Lunsford of 2234 Carytown Road, Royston, Georgia, to build a six-house poultry farm on a 145.64 acre tract of land located at 3309 Carytown Road, and those are tax parcels 040-0228 and 032-046. Is Mr. Lunsford here? Come on up, Mr. Lunsford.
Hi, y'all.
Good. Can you tell us about your application?
Yes, sir. We've got 145 acres, want to build six pullet houses on it with CWT. They're actually for my son. He's in Marines, going to be getting out in about a year and a half. So we're going to start the process now, so he'll be ready when he gets out.
Okay. Commissioners, do you guys have questions? Mr. Lunsford? What's the water source? Are you guys going to be using?
County water.
County water. Okay, no wells?
No.
Okay. You want to tell us anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak in favor of Mr. Lunsford's application? No one who wants to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak against Mr. Lunsford's application? No one? Okay. All right, this time, we'll move on to the next item. The third item on the agenda for the hearing is a request by Mr. Lunsford to rezone two eight-acre tracts of land located on South Fairview Road from agriculture-intensive to residential single-family. The two tracts of land are tax parcel 054-004A and 054-004C. So, Mr. Lunsford, if you'd come back up, talk to us about this rezoning application.
Me and Alex Hart bought this property, and we was wanting to have it rezoned, build some small three, four-bedroom houses, 14, 1600 square foot. It's located between the New Elementary and Amalonia, so it's in a good location for housing. There's nothing really up there that works. I had a house a few weeks ago, the demand, which I'm sure y'all know, we put it on the market on Friday, and had eight people look at it on Saturday and Sunday, and sold it on Monday. So there's a big demand right now for housing in Franklin County.
What's the, what price range do you have in mind? Do you think this house is?
I would try under 200, you know, from 160s to, you know, maybe 190s, somewhat that area.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Lunsford?
Now, are you doing the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you'll be overseeing it?
Yes, we'll be the general contractor.
Okay.
That's good to hear, the state and the county.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to come up and speak in favor of Mr. Lunsford's application to rezone the land on South Fairview Road? Anyone who wishes to speak against the application? Okay, here none. Move on to the next part. The fourth item on the agenda for the hearing is an application by Mr. Lunsford for a proposed subdivision located on the two eight-acre tracts of land located on South Fairview Road. So, Mr. Lunsford, come on back. Is there anything else that you, other than what you've talked? Do y'all have questions about the subdivision? I had one other thing. I forgot to ask you a while ago. When you have the subdivision laid out, is there going to be any buffer, like around the property for the whole subdivision, the total subdivision?
Basically, just kind of separate.
Okay. I was just thinking in terms, there are, the rest of the land around that is ag, or ag-intensive, or just, how is it zoned?
Ag-intensive.
Okay.
It's ag-intensive. There's a, to the left, there's a couple rental houses to the left side, and then to the right, just a small home.
Okay, so a few residential areas right there, plus, yeah, okay. Y'all, any other questions? Okay. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the subdivision proposal? Anyone who would like to speak against subdivision proposal? All right, let's move on to the next item. The fifth item on the agenda for the hearing is a conditional use permit for Clifford Greenway, 381 Simsbridge Road, Commerce, Georgia, for a two-house poultry farm on a 25.15 acre tract of land located at 1579 Stonebridge Road, and that's tax parcel 054-044. This time, I need to disclose to the board in the hearing that the applicant, Mr. Greenway, is a relative. I have no financial or other interest in this application or proposed use, but in order to avoid a conflict of interest, or even the appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this portion of the hearing and step outside the room. So at this time, I'm going to turn the chair over to Commissioner Robert Franklin. He's our vice chair, and he'll conduct the hearing on this last item. So, Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Greenway, will you come forward? Explain what you have in mind.
Yes, we just purchased a property on 1579 Stonebridge Road, and we just wanted to build two breeder houses there for a family.
And we have did the, we have calculated, and we have the plan on the proper setbacks for the county. Our closest poultry farm would be approximately 1,500 foot away, that side to side, side to front. The fans will be approximately 1,650 foot away, and that's our closest farm that is closest to us, and as I recall, it is in the requirements.
Yeah, okay. Does any of the board members have questions?
Can we refer to Mr. Delozer? I know in the email, there was, it was said that there was.
Yeah, so in the, in the public hearing for the planning commission, there was some, there was some concern from adjoining neighbors with the proximity of a breeder house to a broiler house, and then there's also concern with the lack of a commitment letter from an integrator. And there's, there's kind of two sides to that, but without it, without a commitment letter from an integrator, there's a lot of things in this application that could change. They would basically tell the integrator, maybe this is what we're going to do, and the integrator wouldn't be accepting it. So to avoid having to go through this over and over, the planning commission did recommend tabling it until a commitment letter was, was produced for, for the farm. And then also, you know, I spoke, I told the planning commission and the applicants that I would do some research on the biosecurity side of the house. I reached out to University of Georgia's Poultry Science Division, and I reached out to the Georgia Poultry Lab. Dr. Zavala's her name, and she's pretty much the end-all, be-all when it comes to poultry in the state of Georgia. They said, they said typically, the integrators are going to be the ones that dictate that, but there was concern that there could be cross-contamination, or, you know, there could be diseases that, that transpired from, or went from the breeder house to the broiler houses because of, because of how close they were. And this is caused because breeder houses, they use live vaccines to treat those hens, treat those, treat those birds to ensure that they don't get any diseases. And you go through like a shedding process, is what they call it, you're shedding the, shedding the vaccine, and there's concern that during that process, it could contaminate that broiler farm. And if, if the broiler farm doesn't get treated the same way from a vaccine standpoint, and there's concern that that could cause negative, negative, you know, impacts on that broiler farm. Now, there is, there is breeder and broiler farms that are just as close, if not closer than that, in the county. However, talking with Dr. Zavala, talking with the University of Georgia, they both said, wow, you know, maybe it might not be the county's job, it might not be the, the Georgia Poultry Lab or UGA's job to do it. There is concern, there is need to address density of poultry houses within North Georgia. They said not just Franklin County alone, they said there's a lot of counties within the North Georgia region that have, have this same concern. So I, I think the planning commission made the right decision to table it until a commitment letter can be produced, because if, if an integrator is willing to take that risk, that means that they've done their research, they've, they've done what they need to on their end to say, hey, we don't believe that this is going to be an issue. And that's, that is, that is why the planning commission did, did ultimately recommend to table it, and then re-evaluated or relook at it once, once a commitment letter can be produced.
Did the university give any idea of recommended, for future cases?
Yeah, so Dr. Zavala's the one that really gave the recommendation. She said, she said, so, broiler house to broiler house, she's, I don't know where she's from, she used meters, so you got to convert it, but she said like 350 meters, which is roughly, I don't know, about 1,050 feet between broiler operations. And then you don't want to be, you don't want to be any less than around that 1,500 to 1,700 foot from breeder to broiler operation, or, or pullet to broiler operation. She said, that's what their research indicates. And she said, again, she doesn't know the right way to go about, you know, putting, putting that on there. But I do, I do agree that from a zoning perspective, it is, it is the job of the planning commission, of the board commissioners when it comes to zoning, to take into consideration who is there first, and there is, there is definitely scientifically proven potential harm to that broiler operation. But I think, I think if you get a commitment letter from an integrator, that kind of, that negates the whole argument. The integrators will say, hey, it'll be all right, and that's, that's why the planning commission recommended the way they recommended it.
Let me say something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we had a word of mouth because we hadn't wrote it down on a piece of paper. But when we met the meeting here the last time on December 17th, Ernie called Tim, okay, and had me fed off. I had a word of mouth committee with Tim.
Right.
You know, and he, because he worked for Tim, he got me fed off.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that was.
That's exactly what happened.
Yeah. I know, I know I did.
And then this right here on Bryant Road, 2585, the same man is arguing this, they've got two breeder houses that are approximately 1,200 foot from four, four broiler house to market.
Right.
He wants us, and mine was going to be 1,700 foot.
Right.
Those are pullet houses, 1,200 foot from.
Pullet, breeder, broiler?
Pullet, and that's pullet houses that you're calling up, that's 1,200 foot from. That was my phone.
Are y'all in talks with any other integrators right now?
Yeah.
We have some options open, but we're not going to speak it out loud, so that way, we don't have a neighbor to go.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, as long as you're pursuing that, that's why I was curious.
Have the planning and zoning been a discussion about updating that, that piece of?
They have, and it's kind of sparked some, it sparked some research. Dr. Zavala has, has indicated she's got some GIS and some statistical data that she's put together over the course of about seven years that kind of maps out and shows how diseases spread and distances and stuff like that. I'm working on getting that from her. We're going to analyze that, and we're going to look at seeing, because there is, there is concern from multiple, multiple angles about the density of poultry houses in Franklin County. And I think, I think that would be a good way to address it, especially if we have something saying, hey, look, there is, there is actually reason for keeping, you know, separated and spaced out, and, you know, try to, try to do it smartly, because it, it hurts, it hurts everybody involved if you were to have an outbreak of any kind of disease. It could be bad for a lot of different, a lot of different people in Franklin County. But answering the question, sort of, yes.
Houses closer together right here.
Was that?
The same man's got houses closer together.
And there are seven broiler houses of him.
Right, and like I said, like I said, there is absolutely houses that are currently closer, there is.
The same man that brought this on.
Within a year.
Yeah.
That was approved within a year. I'm sure if the diseases were brought up then, why is it now that we're trying to work on the diseases when within a year ago, he had breeder houses, and I'm sure it was not brought up, it was not an issue.
I don't, I don't know when Ernie then went through it. I, it had been last year.
It's been about seven years ago.
It's been, it's been, it's been quite two years ago.
But did breeder houses have been recent?
No, the two breeder houses on 327 are seven years old.
Not 327?
It is, it is. 327 are seven years old, I mean, I'm building.
Um, but I think, I think a good way to just resolve all of it is wait till we get that commitment letter, and then if we do get a commitment letter, they, they do meet all the current county regulations, but again, even with, even, even with meeting it, there could be changes to this application once you get a commitment letter. They might want to change the size of the house, the position of the house, there could still be changes to it, even, even, you know, taking all the other issues out of the picture.
Board members, anybody else have a question for?
Just a curiosity question, because I know you're familiar with it, but say, they get a commitment letter from Pilgrims, just throw out a name. Pilgrims is essentially stating, we stand behind this operation, and are they assuming liability if they impact another breeder operation?
No, but, but the way.
I mean, generally, insurance is going to cover those kinds of things.
And insurance won't cover that, but insurance won't cover disease at all, and.
Can I say something, Scott? If, if they get a commitment letter from Pilgrims or Fieldale, the guy's got chicken houses next to them in Fieldale now, right? If they had a Fieldale commitment letter, then their vaccine program would work with their program, and they could have hens next to a Fieldale broiler farm. But if they were with Pilgrims and you got a Fieldale farm together, and if they don't work together with a vaccine program, it's a nightmare for them and for Fieldale.
Gotcha.
That's where, you know, most of the time, when you see farms that's, that's close together, most of the time, they're same companies. Or if it's a pullet farm and a hen farm, they're all on the same vaccination program somewhat. I mean, little things change, but they just got to vaccinate the board.
Who's the integrator? Who's the integrator for this neighboring farm?
Fieldale.
Fieldale, okay.
Yeah, generally, the, generally, the integrators are going to try to work the best they can on that, because they, they don't want the same, same thing happen to them on the reverse side. So there's, while they don't have to, they, they generally do try to, you know, everybody tries to play nice when it comes to biosecurity, because it does, it does impact everybody.
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak in favor of?
I would like to know if this is the first case that's come up.
Come, come up to the podium and give the clerk your name.
My name is Elizabeth Bryan, and I would like to know if this has been the first case of, when the setbacks was correct, that they have not issued a term of whatever application.
This is, this is the first case that I know of that there has not been a commitment letter, and this is the first case that I know of that the, the potential for disease being spread has been, that I'm aware of.
That you're aware of.
That I'm aware of, yes, ma'am.
Generally, whenever it comes to us at this point, there's been a commitment letter by an integrator, and that's already been through that process. I can't speak to whether it's been the first case or not.
Well, we had a word of mouth commitment there, but because of friendship, they changed.
It seems like it's, it's got so become personal, and I don't agree with that as a citizen of Franklin County.
Who's it personal with? It's not personal with me.
Well, Mr. Dawkins that was here the last time that spoke, he had chicken houses that many around. I understand, since then, I have educated myself a little bit about those, and I just wondered if there has been any other issues about people getting their application filled when their setbacks was correct.
I'm, I'm starting, this is my seventh year on the board, and I, this is the first one that's come before since I've been on here, that there was not an integrator commitment that I, that.
Well, he had one with word of mouth, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
And then either that night or the next day, it's my understanding that Mr. Dawkins made phone calls, and he's big friend, I suppose, with whoever you get chickens from.
You know, I, I'm not sure, and I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not friends with Mr. Dawkins, I don't know, but I'm just saying, this is the first time that, I've, I've seen it come before, is that we didn't have an integrator. So, I mean, that's, that, that's the only time I remember.
And now, there has been other, other scenarios where chicken houses have setbacks, and there's been other issues with it, so there's.
I just heard this county's.
Making, making your setbacks isn't the only, that's why it's a conditional use permit, because you have to look at more than, more than just the setbacks. That's why it's called a conditional use permit.
So if everybody that comes in here from this on out, are they going to study that particular outfits, surroundings?
We study everything at this point. We study everything at this point. It's part of why Scott is, is in the position that he's in, because the county is growing, and it does.
Yeah. Okay, well, with these, the people, the different growers, I guess is what you call them, the people that puts the chickens in the chicken houses, do they not have their own vaccines?
Well, I think that's, that's what sort of runs into the issues, that maybe one breeder uses a certain vaccine where another one uses a different one.
But it's the same kind of chickens?
And they, it, well, I think when you have broilers, and you have, you have pullets, and then you have the layers, you run in, I think you run in, I'm not real sure about it, but I think you run into a difference in vaccines that are provided to each one and everything.
That each company has their own vaccines, or does each company have a different vaccine for the same thing?
Well, and I think like Mr. Al, Mr. Lunsford was, was saying is that there's some companies that do work together to, if they're close, have houses close together to make sure vaccines are compatible and don't cause problems and everything. I, I think the biggest issue that our planning and zoning has right now is just having an integrator. I think that's the biggest issue. If, if there was an integrator, there would be a lot of questions that, that would be answered from that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anybody else want to speak?
Actually, not for or against, but several years ago, I come before this board, before the zoning board, one of the public forums. I was tabled for three months, for three months, that I couldn't come before the board to get a permit, and I'm asking tonight, going forward, can you still come if you're tabled at a zoning board before the board to vote on? So that the rules has changed in the last seven years.
Well, and, and Bubba kept me out. Actually, I did reach out to Bubba, make sure I was doing right, that the Board of Commissioners is the actioning authority when it comes to any zoning decision. So the planning commission can recommend tabling, the planning commission can't table. Y'all would be the one to take that action to table.
But you're changing rules from what you did. Go back and look at the directive.
I wasn't there.
I'm not saying, I'm saying you can't change rules in the middle of the.
Well, you.
And Bubba, you can go back and look at the directive, it's on the minute somewhere.
I don't, I don't know that.
For three months?
You gotta ask me.
I, I did, just like these people, come right, come right to the board for three months, and you have to wait three months to do a project.
So, and that was in front of the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
And, and that was not a, not a question that was ever asked of me that I, that I looked at, so I.
So then, while we all here, this is open public, what, what use is having a planning commission if what they say is tabled is no good?
They make, they make recommendations.
Yes, if I'm saying it's, it's still no good, it's a, it's a waste of 30 days for these people, for the next man that walks in here. This man over here, we're paying as county.
Well, it might be, it might be a waste for, for your birthday, but it's not a waste for these.
Not, not for these, but for, as far as time, the, the people that's on the zoning board, it's a waste of their time to come if they're, if what they say is not a table.
They're making a recommendation to the board. They're making a recommendation to the board.
I'm just saying you're changing all the rules.
No, that's not, that's what the rules are.
No, it ain't been in the last five years for nothing.
Well, that's what the rules say. That's what the rules say.
I'm just saying that maybe the rules have been...
And that's not?
Been in place.
But, I mean, the rules, as far as I know, with regard to conditional use permits, haven't, haven't changed.
So from now, if it's tabled, vote yes, vote no, the next, the following, you come before the board commissioners?
Correct.
Regardless?
In fact, in fact, the code says, help me out the timeline, Scott, because the, the, the planning commission has to make a decision, I think, within sixty days.
I think eighty days, right.
And if they do not make a decision within sixty days, it's deemed...
And that's when I came before them.
It's deemed recommended approval and then it goes back before the board. And so, it might be the...
But it's ninety days, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. These guys up here know, when they read, Scott sends them all the information. They know what the decision is going to be based off, based off the zoning, the regulations, the county.
They know what the recommendation is from the planning commission.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, they're going to make, they're going to, and when you go back and look at the records, there's, in the last year, they've been two or three cases that they voted against the recommendation of the planning.
Because there's a public hearing that happened here and there were other people...
But the planning commission doesn't have any, any decision.
They make a recommendation and this board considers it.
Okay.
But it's not binding, it's not a binding decision.
It's still a waste of thirty to sixty days for this person, for me, if they're trying to get hens. And I know you don't, you might know a lot about chickens, you might not know that. But when they get a commitment letter, they got a verdict. And that means nine months, six months, whatever, they're going to have those houses built, ready for chickens. Same with pullets. Broiler houses, you can move those numbers. But I'm saying as the board, you know, it's time, we've never had anybody like Scott in that position. You know, it's time for the board to take a look at this and say, let's put responsibility on this man to look at all the guidelines that were put in place in two thousand and seven. Five, five or seven?
Five.
Five, that was put in place, the board voted on it and said, this is our regulations. You make this, this and this, then you can do this in our county. Let him make the recommendation to come to the board and save everybody thirty, forty-five days or ninety days or whatever.
The, the planning commission has sixty days to do what they're going to do. And, and what they're going to do is, is going to be a recommendation to the board. That's all, that's all they have to do.
When you tabled it, they was tabled, but they're here tonight. So what is a table on planning commission?
The planning commission is recommending to this board that this board tabled.
But I'm, I'm still saying, in the past, that's not the way to...
I'm trying to say, I, the planning commission, my opinion is the planning commission does not have authority to table something beyond the sixty days that they have to make a decision. Because once sixty days is, it is deemed to be approved essentially and to go before the board.
I have one, one more thing I'd like to say. If we needed a commitment letter before we had even filled out the application, paid for the fee, we should have been aware that we had to have that commitment letter. It was never told to us that we had to have it in order for our application to go through. They said that we could file the application with or without that commitment letter. Now, if we had that commitment letter...
Now, I never, I never said with or without. We did, we did discuss who, who the commitment letter was with. At first I was told Pilgrims, then I was told Rock Hill, then I was told CWT. And generally what I'd do is I'd call the integrators just to verify this person offered to CWT is pullets. You know, the previous ones were Pilgrims. I've, I've got the contact information for these integrators, like I said, these people have a commitment letter. I have never seen, I've, I've never had one come through that does not have a commitment letter. So, now, I, I do not, shouldn't be a requirement going forward. Yeah, maybe we should make the requirement going forward, but given, given the other X factor, had not been other factors into it as well, maybe, I don't know. But there's too many, there's too many things I could change once you get that commitment letter that would, that would automatically make you have to go back through this whole process again. The, the direction of the house, the size of the house, the, you know, there's all kinds of things that could change in that process. By getting approved without a commitment letter, you're locking yourself into, we can't, we can only do this. And some integrators might, might be okay with that, some integrators might not be. If they, if they want to change that, it would, it would require you to go back through this process again. So that's, that's why the research was done, I think, I called two or three times about commitment letter, who you're going with. That's why that process is done on the forefront. Because there is, there is a lot of things that can change once that integrator says, yes, we want to build chickens for us, but we want this house to be ten foot wider, sixty foot longer. You know, then, then you're going through setbacks, you're, you're, you're changing, especially on y'all's, because y'all's, you ain't got much room to maneuver on y'all's. It's a tight tract of land already. So that's why, that's why I disclosed that information to the planning commission and that's why the planning commission made that recommendation.
And if we've been aware of, when we, when y'all had tabled, when the planning commission board, when they had tabled it that night, we were told they needed to find out about the diseases. If we known, if we knew, someone talked, look, you need a commitment letter by the time we had the next meeting, we would have pursued that.
And the commitment, the commitment letter was, was discussed as well with it. So that was, you know, that was, I know it was discussed because I know we discussed the same thing about you're locking yourself into...
And see, because we discussed our soon to be commitment letter, it was flushed down the drain by our neighbor because he did not want that there.
Right, and I, like I said, when, when I called the, the integrator that I was told that you were going to roll with, they said that they, y'all did not have a commitment letter. Not only did y'all not have a commitment letter, but they didn't have, they weren't given any other commitment letters through 2021. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't have even, even given you one by December of 2021.
Well, we were told different, and that was before our neighbor had called.
Right.
We were told different.
We were told much the same time.
Right, so I don't, I know, I know talking to the individual at the, with the integrator that makes the decisions that a commitment letter was never given.
No, the commitment letter had never been given, but it ain't, we didn't ever talk about it.
Right, and, and...
That's when we left this meeting, that night, the phone calls was made.
Right, and that, you know, commitment letter is signed contract between you and the integrator. So that, that locks you in. So that's, so, yeah, when I talked to them, they said there were going to be no commitment letters through 2021 and they had no way to, they had no way to look at 2027.
Of course, after Ernie talked to them, no, they wouldn't want it.
Of course.
Because they were friends.
I don't, I don't know who talked to who. I know that I talked to the individual that gives the commitment letters from CWT and that there was none that was given for y'all or for anybody through the end of 2021. That's, that's all that I can speak on.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think he told the people up there that he met all the requirements.
He does meet all the setback requirements, he does.
That you were going to, you would suggest that they table it because of science.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't tell them to table because of science. They said, they, they discussed what they wanted to do. I said, are y'all, is what the planning commission wanted to do going to be recommend tabling it to do further research on biosecurity and waiting on a commitment letter? And they were interested, yes. I think they were really concerned with biosecurity. That's what we spent the most time on because there has been discussions of density and the effects of closely, you know, closely dense chicken houses in the county. That's been, that's been discussed previously and this kind of just shed light back on it again. Kind of said, yeah, this is something that we have said that we need to look at and, and this is the reason why we need to look at this, you know, it's before us again, so. And I, and I have, and I did, I did reach out to multiple reputable sources in the biosecurity world. And they did say integrators are ones that normally handle that. But they, there was concern in the North Georgia area with how densely packed poultry houses are.
So is that going to become a rule, a law for everyone?
The, the planning commission will review it and if we find that we need to change it for setbacks between, between different poultry operations, then we would recommend amending the zoning text to the board of commissioners. They could either amend it or not amend it. If they chose to amend it, then that would become part of the, you know, part of the setback, part of the requirements for building poultry houses.
I know that our county is not, for the chicken mix.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It makes a very good living.
Right.
And he, my understanding is that he wants to do this for himself, not for resale, this for himself.
Oh, I don't, it doesn't matter to you, resale, that's not...
Well, that was the big issue at that time.
I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall the resale, but...
I do know that it come up because I often hear it that way.
Okay, well, it's...
She got to ask him, he wants to go resale, one of the ladies...
She might, she might ask him for resale, but that's, that's just a, you know, factor to consider as well. I, she might have asked, I, I, I can't, I can't recall those, I have not...
Oh, can I ask a question? Why did they do table yours for three times? Do you remember?
Oh, I'm trying to remember what it was. Who the board member was at that time? This was five, about five years ago. I can't remember the exact reasons, what they said, I can't...
But you didn't get it?
But I got tabled, I guess, two meetings, it was about ninety days before I went to board the board.
And that's possible, really?
Yeah, it was two, it was two times they tabled me before I went. But like I said, at that time, the table was used as a reason to, to slow you down to go through the process.
Well, anytime, anytime you recommend tabling, it's, it's to gather...
Information.
More information. They, they don't feel like they have everything they need to make, to make the appropriate decision. So, again, I don't know which one it was, I can, I can go back and look and figure it out, but I wasn't, I wasn't here this time.
Is anybody else speak against it? Okay, we'll move on. And I will say, as a board member, we have tabled stuff in order to get more information, like they were saying. We, you know, I don't want to vote on something when I don't have all the information, you know. I mean, it is what it is. Because you sure don't want somebody voting on something when they, man, I need to know this, you know. Sometimes it hurts, but you have to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. At this time, without objection, we're going to adjourn the public hearing and we'll call the regular board meeting to order in just a few moments. So as of now, the public hearing is adjourned.